All right, it's six o'clock. So at six o'clock, I call with me the Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the D.C. Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item two is invocation for that Pastor Ronnie Mills from King Chapel Church. Welcome, sir.
Let's pray. Father, I just want to thank you just for the time that we have here this evening to discuss things. Father, I pray thanking you for the mayor and the council and the citizens all that are here. I pray that everything that is said and done tonight would be in unity, Lord, and Lord, that you would be glorified and honored in all that takes place. Father, we praise you and we thank you for your son, Jesus. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Item three is audience participation. That's covered on the screen. If there's any item, posted item, you would like to discuss or speak upon, please see the city secretary. You would speak on that. If it is a public hearing, you are allowed to speak once I call for speaker. So please, please take note of that. Item four is the consent agenda. Item A is action regarding minutes of April the 6th. B is action regarding resolution 2021-13 denying the DCRF application proposed by Encore. C is action regarding appointment of Mark Andrews as a police reserve officer. D is action regarding ordinance 2021-09, amending Article II Advisory Directive and Parks Board of Chapter 58, Parks and Recreation, the Saginaw City Code. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All those in favor raise your hand. Although opposed, aren't they? Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum this evening. We have a full house. Thanks for coming, folks. I appreciate it. Item number five is proclamation. So this is a proclamation, and I have it here, on child abuse. Is there anyone from, I don't see anybody from the director engaging for the Alliance for Children, anybody from Alliance for Children? No? Okay. I will read this briefly and then we will make sure that they get this. Proclamation. Whereas children are our future and our greatest resource, and whereas every child deserves a nurturing family and a safe environment to grow into a healthy, productive member of the community, and whereas child abuse is one of the nation's most serious public health problems and threatens the safety of our community, and whereas in Tarrant County, 6,203 children were confirmed as victims of child abuse or neglect in 2020, and whereas the Alliance for Children provided trauma-informed services to 2,125 children in 2020, whereas finding solutions to prevent child abuse is a community responsibility and depends on the involvement of all citizens, and whereas effective child abuse prevention investigation and treatment programs succeed because of partnerships among public and private agencies, schools, religious organizations, medical services, and the business community. Now therefore be resolved that I, Taffelville Mayor of the city of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Saginaw, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce child abuse and neglect significantly in the next years to come. Thank you. We will make sure they get this. Moving forward, item number, I gotta go back. Item number six, oh, sorry. Yeah, item number six, COVID vaccination update. Joe Lassner. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, citizens, mayor, council. The clinic continues to run smoothly. Right now, we've currently administered 3,802 first doses, 43 second doses. It's going to start ramping up again with the second doses coming for the clinic, so we'll be seeing a lot higher numbers starting next week. Questions?
What was that first number again?
3,802.
All right. Okay. Mayor?
How long do we anticipate that we will be offering these vaccinations?
It's going to go on for eight weeks, ma'am. And so I think May 28th is the final day.
And if we find that more people still need to be vaccinated, will we be able to ramp it back up again, or that as a drop-dead date?
There is, there is a possibility of expansion if there is a need. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Joe? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Thank you for keeping us involved and great work.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item number seven, Fire Department Staff Recognition. And for this, Fire Chief Doug Spears.
Thank you, Mayor Filippo. Counsel. On February 11th, just after 6:00 a.m. in the morning, right down the roadway from our city, winter weather conditions resulted in what's being characterized as one of the worst vehicle accidents in U.S. history, certainly one of the worst in Texas, if not the worst. If you unfortunately saw any of the various videos, you know how disturbing and tragic it was. It was a horrific accident. 130-plus vehicles involved, 65-plus people injured, six fatalities. The accident scene stretched out for a mile or longer. Over 100 fire department, police department EMS vehicles were involved responding to the accident. While the accident happened in our partner city of Fort Worth, our fire department was called upon to help. We were one of the first resources sent to the scene. While the road conditions that get to the accident were challenging, the working conditions once there were far more challenging. Ice on the roadway prevented you from walking, poor visibility happened early in the morning. The number of people involved, getting access to them, was all challenging. All the responders involved is likely something they've never encountered in their career. Hopefully, they never will again. It is without question, excuse me, there were numerous heroic actions that happened that day. Every responder involved is worthy of praise in their handling of this incident. My intent this evening is to recognize our personnel that were involved. Their worthy, or their participation is worthy of special recognition. The size of the incident, as I mentioned, required it to be split in two divisions, a north division and a south division. Our very own Assistant Fire Chief Craver was in charge of the north division. Quite a monumental task for an incident of that magnitude. Sea Shift Station, Sea Shift Station 214 was the crew on duty that day. Lieutenant John Gambino, apparatus operator Kyle Lewis, firefighter Garrett Musser, and firefighter Corey Robinson were the ones that responded. While Station 2's crew was responding, there were still vehicles being involved in the accident. They were going down the roadway, not knowing what was in front of them, and the ice on the roadway prevented them from stopping. So they made a heads-up decision to perform a rolling roadblock to stop the traffic from keeping going forward. They slowed down the traffic, prevented them from getting in the accident. This probably prevented more injuries and more fatalities, and certainly more firefighters who were already on scene just prior to us getting there prevented some of those accident injuries to firefighters and prevented accidents involving fire apparatus, probably saving thousands, tens of thousands of dollars. That action alone, and an action that usually can go unnoticed, resulted in saving firefighter lives, most likely along with the rest of the people. There were countless crucial decisions during that event by everyone involved, that rolling roadblock chief among them. That credit really goes to apparatus operator Kyle Lewis. He's the one that, that mentioned that, and they performed that action. I have an award for each of our five members. One of them is unfortunately not with us today. He changed shift and had a prior commitment. But I'd like to present them with an award here shortly. Before I do, we have Fire Chief, Fire Chief Jim Davis with us. I think he has something that he was, he would like to present also, so I'm going to give him an opportunity to come up and say a few words, if you don't mind.
Welcome, chief. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, members of council, city manager Rayum. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Members of the Saginaw community, thank you for having me. I think Chief Spears outlined the accident and the specifics of the accident in great detail. You know, the couple of things that I'd add to that are, you know, no firefighter, no paramedic in, in any fire department wishes bad things to happen to good people. And we have, you know, six families whose lives were changed forever that horrific morning. But every one of them want to be there when bad things happen. They are problem-solving people. And that morning, what I really want to address with you momentarily here is the cooperation, the collaboration, and the communication between the city of Fort Worth and the city of Saginaw fire departments. I come to you today on behalf of Mayor Price and city manager David Cook with a great appreciation for the relationship that we have with your fire department, and specifically with Scott and Doug and the members of his department. You and I have talked previously, as well as the city manager and I, and it hasn't always been that way. But we are dedicated on making good decisions in the best interest of the community as a whole. And that morning, the city of Fort Worth reached out and needed help, and the folks from Saginaw and the Saginaw Fire Department were there. And this is, and it played out on national television, and we should be very proud of the response that our agencies worked together to do. So with that, I have a, a small token of appreciation from the Fort Worth Fire Department to present a certificate to Fire Chief Doug Spears, Assistant Chief Scott Craver, and the Saginaw Fire Department Station 214 Sea Shift for the assistance of the Fort Worth Fire Department and the accident victims and the weather-related I-35 mass casualty vehicle accident on Thursday, February 11th, 2021. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak for a couple of minutes about our relationship and thank these guys personally for, not just the events of that day and their assistance, but our, our continued relationship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Davis. Mayor, I've commented numerous times publicly on the vital partnership we have with Fort Worth, and it continues to evolve to mutual benefit. Now I'll have the guys come in, Station 214 Sea Shift, and I've got some awards that I'll walk up there and present, and we'll take a couple of photos, if that's okay. There we go. Presented to Saginaw Fire Department, rank and name for each one of them in recognition of your dedication and performance on February 11th, 2021, a tragic vehicle accident that soon, that won't soon be forgotten. Presented with the Fire Department's sincerest appreciation and respect. Thank you for a job well done.
Thank you, chief. Well done, guys. Very well deserved. That's awesome. All right, moving forward. Item number eight. At 6:12, we're in a public hearing. Consider it an action regarding a request for approval of amendment, to amend ordinance 2020-24 establishing the Belt Mill Plan Development District by approving a development plan for the district detailing community, commercial, and single-family, multifamily uses described, et cetera, et cetera. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Trice.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council. It's my pleasure to bring this to you tonight, another step toward the completion, or actually the groundbreaking of this project that we're excited about in North Saginaw. This is brought to us by the Belt Mill Saginaw Limited Liability Corporation. Don Allen is here tonight, representing, is the developer. You recall in November of last year, this, this particular PD came to you as a conceptual development plan. That allowed them to move forward with some components of their, of their development. There have been some revisions, minor revisions, actually to the positive, we think, since that conceptual development plan was, was approved in November, and so we re-noted it for public hearing tonight. There is a sheet in your, in your packet, an analysis that shows the variances between this development plan and what our standards are for the different districts affected under the PD. You can look at it. As you can see, most of those have to do with side yard and front, front backyard setbacks. I will point out one thing, as far as the, the multifamily, the MF2 district, they are introducing a new, a product as far as a, a studio unit. You can see that they've got the one-bedroom unit that they have reduced from the standard of 650 to 620, and then a new studio use, which will be 575 square feet. And there is a definition provided in their development standards for a studio unit. It's a living unit comprised of a single large room with attached kitchen or kitchenette and a separate bathroom. And my understanding is that that's to meet current market demands that are out there for, for that sort of product. So with that, I'll introduce either Doug Powell, I think has a PowerPoint that he wants to move through, and then certainly if you have any questions, I'll try to answer those also.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Thanks, Rick, for the introduction. I'm Don Allen. I'm with Belt Mill Saginaw LLC, and Lackland Holdings is our parent company. We're headquartered here in Fort Worth. And we're pleased to be back to continue moving forward on our Belt Mill project. We've had, again, plenty of interest. We are moving full speed ahead. City staff has been very good and expeditious to work with, so I'd like to compliment them and thank them for that. And with that, we have three cases, there are three items here on your agenda tonight. The first is our development site plan and modifications to our PD, as Rick mentioned. Second is our preliminary plat, and the third will be the actual site plan, I believe, for the apartment complex, the first apartment complex out of the project. And so I won't get up and do this for all three cases, but we're happy to be here tonight. And with that, I'm going to ask Doug Powell, our consultant, Gina McAdams, to come forward and give you a brief presentation. Thank you.
Do you mind if I take this off?
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening, and as Don said, thank you for having us back. I'm Doug Powell. I'm a planner with McAdams, who was part of the, the original process. I was, was here along with Don and Jim Makins with the Makins Company is also in the audience. So we're all back to see this thing go through the next, the next, next phase. So I think you're all familiar with the site. Last week, I was here at P&amp;Z, and I asked Rick about the, the overpass and how that was going, and he said they were ahead of schedule, and I couldn't believe it. I drove that way to get here tonight, and I cannot believe the progress that they've made. But it's right there at the overpass, across from Trinity Industries on the north side of Bailey Boswell. This was a concept plan that we brought to you, and I'm going to go through and show you, again, there's several changes, but it really is a difference between planners drawing a plan and getting it to the engineers. Darren Andrews with our office should be here, but he has COVID, came down, and so can't be here. So it really is a function of going from a conceptual 30,000 feet down to something you can build, and we ran into a couple of things we needed to change. So here is the development plan that's in your packet. Going, first thing is, the residential lots are larger. They were drawn at 40 feet, now they're 42 feet wide. And so there's fewer of them, they're much, they're much bigger in size. The next one is, you see that now there's a little curve as you come off Bailey Boswell. That's because we, when we were doing the concept plan, we did not adequately locate where that underpass, and that is underneath the, the overpass was. So we had to put a little curve there through the commercial area to get it back on track. But actually, I think it's going to work well because some folks were concerned about that being a straight street and a lot of cut-through traffic, a little S-curve in there will help slow that traffic down, still carry the same amount in terms of volume. This road on the east side has also been shifted. It's been shifted to the west, and that's because when we started doing the, the actual construction drawings, we determined, in working with your consultant, that the pond had to be bigger. Those ponds, and they're still two ponds, they're wet ponds, but it is bigger. What happened when they improved Bailey Boswell, they really didn't account for stormwater. So we actually had to pick up not only what, what was coming off our site or onto our site, but we had to help them out, too. So it's bigger, and that roadway gets shifted over. But other than that, really no difference. The, the driveway onto Wagley Robertson has been shifted. There was, there was a driveway, a road onto, not a driveway, a road. It's just been shifted because of the reconfiguration, because of those lot sizes. Everything shifted around a little bit. There we go. So the park in the residential area, we committed to an acre park. It's, it's larger than an acre now, but it has moved, so it's farther to the north, which, again, it's still, it's over an acre, it's still in that residential area. And I think that's all the changes. I did have this other map I wanted to put up because the commitment to, to y'all, when we came through with the, with the first application, was we're going to have trails and open space. And before, we just had a couple of open spaces. Now all these open spaces are in the packet and listed in terms of the approximate acreage, and the red line shows all the trails and sidewalks and the connectivity. And so we've committed to continue to do that, that we told you we were going to do. That's the end of my presentation. Again, I think all the changes, as Rick said, is really to the positive, and it's kind of going from a conceptual down to something that you can build. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Yes, Mayor, go ahead.
I, I know that this is a step-by-step process, and I don't know how many more times you will come before us, but do you anticipate further changes down the road as you, as you learn more information? Or do you feel like this might be?
Yeah, this is, is kind of the end. At the very northwest of the property, there's some townhouse, a small townhouse area that we're not sure if that really kind of works, and so I don't know if, if, if that really will, will, will get built. But the next item on your agenda is the plat, and so we're building roads and building infrastructure, and so a lot of it's not going to change. What'll be back before you is site plans, like tonight, the first project to be developed is, is, and I don't know, I guess, I could point maybe here is, oh, just lost. It's, it's the area, the north-south street, it's east of that, and so it is that, boy, again. I wish I could. Oh, there it is. Thank you, Don.
That's old school. That's okay.
And we've got a pointer now, too. Thank, thank you, sir. And so you will have, you will have, you will have site plans coming in. But again, the changes, I think, this point forward are all going to be very minor because with this, Belt Mill Parkway will be built, the north-south street will be, will be built, so the access, the main access points will be built, utilities will be in.
Sure, go ahead.
And looking into your crystal ball, can you predict when the first portion of this might be built?
I would turn it over to Don, but I think immediately. I think we're pushing to, to try to get this under construction.
Let me just, don't go anywhere, but. Yes, we've actually submitted construction plans for Belt Mill Parkway all the way through the project to the city. We've got first comments. We've made a resumetal. So we're well into the engineering process for Belt Mill Parkway and designing the ponds and now, and Millstone, we're going to call that north-south road Millstone Parkway, and that will be coming into the city shortly. And not long after that, you'll have a first summittal of engineering plans for the single-family residential, assuming we're all approved tonight and can move forward. So we, we are moving, and, and, and the changes that Doug mentioned are also essentially generated by the actual engineering. Once we started the real design engineering of the pond, had to get a little bigger, as he said, we know, we had to tweak some roads and stuff, which is pretty normal for a project like this. But doing the engineering flushes all of that out. So that kind of, as he said, going forward, the only changes you'll see are the site plans within each pod are a projection of what, you know, it, we think they might be, but every user will have their own site plan. So we'll be back with a site plan for the other, for the second multifamily tract before too long, and we expect not long after that for the, the, the third multifamily tract. And, and, and one of the two will be age-restricted, as we talked about. So other, and then when the retail comes along, which will follow later, the retail will take a while, we expect to see, until we get the roads well under construction, it's a rooftops being built, that's when the retail guys will come back and, and get really interested. And again, whatever, whatever we show as the retail site plan will probably change because every retail, you know, every developer has their own internal way they want to develop it, and we'll be back with site plans on those. But that's where we are, and, and our, our goal actually is, is here in the next, they're working very hard to get me a bid package because I plan on putting Belt Mill Parkway and Millstone at the bid here very shortly, so we can get started on construction. So.
I have another.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mayor. You have the floor.
Oh, and this is just a comment for the benefit of the audience and anybody that might be watching. We hear a lot of complaints about development being, buildings being built before the roads are being built and/or improved upon. So this is a good example of a mixed-use development that is planned as a group of different items in the big plan, where these roads do come first. And I think that's an, an advantage to this type of development.
I totally agree.
And that.
And you're right.
Now our, our residents can realize that's another advantage of this type of concept.
I agree. Honestly, the, the construction of Bailey Boswell and, and the, the difference it's going to make for that very busy, very major intersection was one of the things that really attracted us to this project. But until then, we saw that as being, there's some limited desirability in certain users, you know? But now that that's, I mean, as you said, the roads under, and now we're going to build our spine road first, so we're going to have the roads there. And you're, you're exactly right. That's what, that's actually what generator addressed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just have one comment. So Don and Doug and Jim and Bren, we are working kind of in parallel to talk about the PID. So many of these improvements that Don mentioned would be part of a project plan that'll come before the council in the very near future, as we have estimates, construction estimates to build these public improvements. Also want to note that overall, the, the concept plan that was initially presented to the council, this is less dense, so less units in, in I think almost all of the tracks.
Yeah, I was going to ask, there's a table.
There is a table in your.
Can we, can we find that and put that on the screen? Is that around here somewhere? I would just look at that table. It's a great table, and I'd love to show that if we can pull that up.
It's actually in the council memo. It's in the cover memo.
So while we're doing that, other questions? Councilmember Copeland, are you, anything else? All right. Mr. Tucker? Mayor Protem?
No.
It's Far.
Just a couple. I just want to clarify, the reduction in multifamily units from 898 units to 236, that's a pretty significant decrease. Are you planning on bringing back more units in tracks two and three, or is that the total build-out units for Belt Mill?
No, that's, that is just for the track that's being developed tonight.
Okay, so the, the original concept contemplated 37 acres, we're at 38 acres now roughly for multifamily. And what you're showing on this tonight is that you're planning on 6.18 units per acre, but ultimately, are you still planning on the 24 units per acre for the 38-acre tract?
Yes.
Okay, so that, I think this table probably needs to reflect accurately what you intend to develop out over time, not just what you intend to develop in track one, and not show what you're intending to develop in tracks two and three.
Right.
I think everybody on the council understands and agrees that you were looking at about an 800 to 900-unit development out there. But whenever you show that you significantly reduce that from 800 and some odd units to 236, that's kind of a surprise.
Right.
I was shocked. I thought, how in the world are you going to make that pencil? Because at this point, you can't pay for it.
Right.
You won't be able to pay for your developments unless you're really leaning on the PID to pay for it, but I don't think you'll get enough out of that either.
Right.
So it looks like you're still going to be developing the 898 roughly units. Is that right?
That's correct.
Or do you plan on developing any more than 898?
No, sir.
Okay. So 898 is still the ceiling that we're working to.
And does that include the age-restricted as well?
Yes, sir.
That's in that 898?
Yes, and remember, one of, it said, the original zoning said that there's three tracks of multifamily, one of which has to be age-restricted, and that's what Don was mentioning. So the first one is not, one of the next two will be.
Excellent. All right. The only other question I had is, I know, you know, we've talked about introducing different funding mechanisms, PID being one of them. There's also some discussion right now about potentially bringing in a TURS to assist in paying for things. I, I would really like to know, you know, I know we're dedicating some park. I would really like to know, you know, I know we're dedicating some park area, we've had some discussions about some public facilities being built in the Belt Mill area. Have we firmed up anything along those lines yet?
No, not yet. Really, the engineering's going to dictate a lot of that, and so after tonight's action, I think we'll start having those discussions. I think it, a TIRS is a likely tool for us to consider to amenitize the entire area.
I think that's right. But what I don't want to have happen is we get locked in with engineering and we have really nothing left to put a facility on, and then we're talking about using more public funds to supplement the development. So, I think as long as we're talking about public funds supplementing the development, we just have to remember the but-for portion of why those public funds are being used. And I'd like to make sure that we're reserving enough land and opportunity for that public facility and for it to be something meaningful for the community and not just a, you know, 1,500-square-foot building with a couple of doors and windows.
So, what we would do in creation of a TIRS, which, on the city end of things, is pretty simple. We would make the district the boundaries of the property, so that would allow us any improvement within the boundaries of the entire property to do something. We're not committed to anything at this point, and like Don mentioned and Doug, things will change slightly in the future, so it's a good point.
Yes, so, when you're talking about the boundary, Gabe, I just want to make sure the council understands this, this is the frame around the picture, okay? But if engineering within the picture creates so much artwork that there's no room left to put something meaningful in it, I want to make sure we're really thinking through that in the engineering phase. We're reserving some space for something meaningful. And at the end, when we do lock it in with the picture frame, we've got something, that we can do something with a TIRS. Just be mindful of that as you're continuing to engineer this. And I know that you guys know the sentiment of the council, it's, I know it's not a surprise. I think that you guys have done a great job of accommodating just about every request that's come off of this dais. The only thing I'm asking is that just please, as you're continuing your engineering and knowing that you're going to be coming back potentially to see some more public funds pumped into this deal, let's make sure there's room for those public funds to be used meaningfully. That's all. Okay?
Charles Beasley. All right, so this is number eight, so this is the plan, sorry, final development plan.
Mayor, I just want to point out that if, if the council's desire is to approve this tonight, then it would be subject to revisions of the table that's included on their, on their development plan to reflect actual densities, as Mr. Farr brought.
But they would come back to us, they would come back to here, to be approved, be revised.
Doesn't have to come back, I think it could be approved subject to.
It can be approved subject to the accurate numbers being reflected. Because candidly, right now, the development plan that is going to be stapled to the ordinance, as Mr. Farr pointed out, limits the development to 236 multifamily units. So that table needs to be revised for their benefit, candidly. Otherwise, it will take an amendment to the PD in order to do that. So, that, but it won't need to come back as long as those numbers, as long as we understand what those numbers are. Because we can't, we can't have the numbers be a mystery and then revised after the fact.
And just to be clear, I've pointed that out here in the room purposefully, because we've all already agreed to the 898. I mean, that's not, that's not a surprise to us either.
And it is a typo.
I just want, I want to make sure, I want to make sure that you guys have not just hamstrung yourself in this.
I appreciate that.
And that I couldn't figure out how you were going to pay for this, if that were the case. So, that's the reason that I brought it up, and if the, if the table amendment is limited to the 898, I have no objection to it. I just, it's what you've been telling us all along.
Is that the only number, Doug, that needs to be revised, or the townhome and single-family?
Yes, I believe so, I just looked at it.
Because the other two are very similar to the concept, so. All right, so, final development plan. Bren, will you remind us what this means, a final development plan, and how this works going forward, just so we're all clear on what we're voting on?
Certainly. So, traditional zoning would be a single-action motion by council. Plan development zoning, because it's more complicated and has more moving parts, allows, as an option, to seek approval in two steps. And that's what the developer has sought, this is the second step. The original plan develop, the original plan development zoning was approved with the concept plan, but in that particular ordinance, it states no development can occur, no building permits issued, until the development plan is adopted by subsequent ordinance, which is what this is. This contains greater detail, it locks down where all the phases will be. Now, that doesn't mean that they can't seek a further amendment, but that would be a zoning amendment and would require additional changes after the fact.
That would require P&amp;Z and council approval?
P&amp;Z and council, that's correct. If the site, if the subsequent site plans that come before you are consistent with that zoning that's been approved, that may be approved this evening, that's not a zoning amendment, and your function is limited to simply ensuring that the site plan that's submitted is consistent with the zoning. In other words, it's not a purely discretionary act each time a site plan comes before you. You're simply reviewing it to ensure that it is consistent with the zoning that has been approved, assuming it's approved this evening.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions for these gentlemen? Counsel? All right, so this is a public hearing. Anyone can speak, so, thank you, sir, I think we've, so anyone can speak at public hearing, you do not need to contact the city secretary, you can just approach the dais. So, anyone who want to speak on item number eight, please do so. Our hearing none, then at 6:37, I take us out of a public hearing, and I will entertain a motion on eight.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the conceptual development plan, modifications as demonstrated tonight, and also reserve the opportunity for the developer to modify the table, as we've discussed.
All right, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. Any opposed? All right, thank you, folks. That's number eight. So moving on to number nine. Item nine, considers an action regarding approval of the preliminary plat for the Belt Mill addition. For that, Rick Trice.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry, I was having, conferring with Bren.
I'll mention something quickly. So, I think just for the minutes, the motion, I assume, is to approve the development plan, not the conceptual development plan, because that was the item associated with the prior ordinance.
I did say conceptual development plan, simply because I read the, the old order as I was reading it off. I did intend my motion to be the development plan, not the conceptual development plan.
No, I think that's fine, it's clear for the record.
Is all the council members, are you okay with that? Are you all clear with the motion? Okay, we will move forward. All right, thank you, Bren. So, we're at nine, preliminary plat. Rick.
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, this is the preliminary plat, as was described earlier for the project, same footprint, dedicates right-of-way for Belt Mill Parkway, you know, in the preliminary form, as a four-lane divided roadway, and then the Millstone, which would be a 40-foot roadway north-south intersecting Bailey-Boswell and Belt Mill. And then also, the residential right-of-ways, which are the standard 50 with a 30-foot roadway within those. So, all these, Mr. Defined, I believe, so if you have any questions, either Nick Adams or I'll try to answer those.
Are questions on the plat? Questions over here on the plat? Mr. Farr? Mr. Beasley? All right, no questions on preliminary plat? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the plat.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the preliminary plat for Belt Mill as presented. Second.
Charles, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. All right, excellent, thank you, guys. Item number 10, considers an action regarding approval of the site plan for the Grand at Belt Mill. For that, Rick Trice.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is the parcel that Mr. Allen pointed out lately, earlier, right in the middle of the Belt Mill development. Site plan has been attached, shows the layout of the building footprints and utilities, the landscape plans, and then they have also provided some renderings, elevations for the construction. So, Todd Finley and his engineer, the developer, is here tonight and will be able to answer any questions that you might have, if you, if you'd like to have an opportunity to speak. So, anyway, that, we recommend approval.
Do we want the presentation or anything y'all want to talk about? You want to go first, or you want to ask questions? So, once you, yeah, come on up.
Hi, my name's Todd Finley, I'm with CLX Ventures. We don't have a presentation. This, this site plan is, is consistent with the development plan that was just approved previously, so we're just here to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you, sir. All right, questions about the site plan, counsel?
Mayor, I did want to add one other item, just discussion only and not part of really the site plan, but the developer wishes at some point to, for the council to consider the carports within the apartment complex. And you'll recall that we recently had an amendment, a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to only allow carports within the, outside the overlay district for emergency community facilities. So, at some point, we may bring a text amendment back to the council through P&amp;Z to consider for, to allow that in an apartment complex, which, I mean, if you think about that, makes probably more sense to have carports in an apartment complex. So, anyway, I throw that out there just for maybe future reference, but certainly not a part of the site plan approval at this time.
Thank you, Rick. Other questions for the, about the site plan, folks? Yes?
This is in particular about the landscape plan portion, or are we only talking about the first portion? In other words, is this an opportunity for me to talk about the landscape plan?
Absolutely. It's part, it's part of this, so yeah, it's all one. Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to commend you on the extensive landscaping that's going to be included and the variety of types of plantings. And I wasn't sure if this was going above and beyond our requirements as our landscape planner, is it merely following the requirements?
It is meeting, in some instances, we do go above and beyond just for our residents.
Right.
So, I would have to have our landscape architect here to identify those in particulars, but it's, we have to do, you know, meet our competition, right? So, appreciate your comments.
And is it a hard and fast rule when you have these types of trees, bushes, et cetera, mentioned in the landscape plan? Is there any room for changing any of those? Is that meant to be absolute, or can those change?
We, we can change them, I mean, we, we, you know, Herb Beeks is a well-known landscape architect, and so we obviously, you know, different species work better in different parts of Texas, and so we can change them, but we traditionally don't, you know, once we, we get down the road and get our package together, we can get a bid, we can move on. But is there something that you?
Well, the only comment that I would like to make is that, whenever possible and whenever the area lends itself to using native Texas plantings, that would, you know, conserve water for our city and also require less upkeep. So, any, any way that can be done in, you know.
Sure.
The most areas would be appreciated.
Okay.
And they can also, a lot of people think there's no color in native planting, and that is incorrect. You can still have pretty colors in native Texas plantings. I just always like to put a plug in for that.
Yeah, we'll definitely take that into consideration. Thank you for your comment.
All right. Counsel, other questions on the site plan? Mr. Beasley? All right, so I'm looking at the elevation here, it appears, three stories?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was looking at that. All right, what does our ordinance say? Is it four stories? What's our max for, for multifamily?
Three-story, 45-foot.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, any other comments on the site plan? Everybody good? All right, thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion then.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Grand site plan as presented. Second.
All right, second. All those in favor raise your right hand. All those, all right, thank you, folks. Item number 11, at 6:45, we're in a public hearing. Considers an action regarding ordinance, amending ordinance 2002-04, zoning ordinance to the city of Saginaw, permitting the permitted use table section 501 to provide that wineries are permitted in special use permit. For that, Rick Trice, Director of Public Works.
Thank you once again, Mayor. Three or four months ago, the, our staff was approached by an individual who was interested in opening a winery in Saginaw. Basically, what this winery is, not traditional wine, more hard apple cider. I'm looking in the audience, because the person who was interested showed up at planning zoning, but anyway, so, to accommodate that, we prepared an ordinance, which added a new use. Winery was not a listed use in our zoning ordinance, so we have a zoning, now a definition for winery, which is in the packet, and then we're recommending, and the planning commission concur, that we would allow that by special use permit in community commercial, light industrial and heavy industrial, and with the stipulation that a site plan would be required. So, certainly, if you have any questions or comments, I will say that that individual that was interested in opening the winery actually opened one north of town. I spoke with him after playing zoning commission, and he is still interested in relocating to Saginaw if the ordinance were to allow that.
Counsel, questions?
Did he have a location, did the person have a location in mind?
He had a location when he talked to us months ago, which was in the Bond Strip Center across from Racetrack. I don't know if that, if that space is still available, but, but that's what we're, they were looking at first.
Questions, counsel? Counselor Big Horse?
I'm just curious, do they plan on fermenting wine, brewing wine there, or just bottling it and serving it?
Well, they didn't get into that sort of detail, but, but the way that the ordinance is drafted, there would be, for example, tasting rooms permitted and onsite consumption, but they do plan to brew onsite. They, currently, or before they relocated north of town, they, they had the production activities going on from, from their garage, so it was kind of a home, home business, but they, they intend to brew.
Do they have any, do they plan to have any Saginaw brand wines, or are you familiar? Had they?
I never went into that sort of detail with them, they were just, again, just wanting to be, the opportunity to allow the use.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But certainly, if the ordinance is passed and they fill an application for an SGP, you'll be open to ask those questions.
And do you know if this is also going to be providing food along with the wine, or is it strictly just a wine tasting?
I didn't go into that sort of detail either, but I gathered it was strictly wine or cider.
Though the ordinance was allowed, the ordinance says restaurants and retail sale of wine for offerings, so, sounds like it's broad. All right, other questions, counsel?
I just have a clarification, I'd like to, I'd like to understand this. This is, this is the winery definition as, according to the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Code, right? Do we have a brewery currently in our ordinance for beer?
For beer?
As defined by Texas Alcoholic Beverage Code?
I don't believe so.
So why are we not knocking out two birds with one stone right here?
That's a, that's a good question, we're just focusing on the winery.
You know, I- You know, my wife really loves wine, and I really love beer. So, I mean, we might, we might as well knock them both out at one time. So is there, is there a reason we can't? I know we can't really do it here on the fly, but can we bring it back and say, do them both?
We could add another use for brewery. I mean, they could be, I don't know if the overlap would cause any sort of issues.
They wouldn't necessarily need to be together, would they?
No, and we've got the ordinance already. It's a plug and play. Candidly, we can just find and replace the term and bring you back a new one.
Oh, I agree.
I mean, we've, we've had discussions about potentially having breweries brought in in the past. And if we need to go ahead and clear the way for that in our ordinances, let's go ahead and get it done for both. Want to table?
We want to table this or we're going to do this one and then just come back with the brewery one whenever we can or get it together?
Because we'll need to bring the brewery item through P&amp;Z anyway. So it may just want to move forward, but it's up to you.
How anxious is the potential client?
I do not know what their timing is. Their intent was that if the ordinance is approved one month, then they would apply our necessary legal. But now that they have a leasing place, I don't know if that might affect their decision.
And I'm okay with this as long as we keep it out of the residential neighborhoods. Mayor wants to?
Counselor, couple?
Would it make sense if the council was in favor of this ordinance to go ahead and pass it and then amend it to include breweries later or not?
So that, we wouldn't amend this ordinance? This ordinance amends the zoning ordinance. So we would just subsequently further amend the zoning ordinance?
I mean, if, if timing is an issue, you know, it might be, it might make sense to go ahead and approve this with the intent of maybe bringing us another amendment soon for the breweries. We don't have any breweries expressing interest at this time?
Just based on her discussion with me and then his interest, again, showing up at P&amp;Z last, last week, you know, I would recommend that we go forward with this ordinance and then come back with the brewery. I mean, we would look at them probably as two separate uses. They probably would come in that way. Although I'm with you, the beer and the wine sounds good to me together, so.
Go ahead.
And I have one final question. It's about the alcohol content of these drinks. And I guess that would probably be more of a Bren about limiting or, you know, what can we expect?
And that's all going to be, that's all going to be dictated by state law. In order to qualify for the TABC permit, there's going to be some alcohol limitations on the content of the beer and the wine.
Counsel, other questions? Yeah, I appreciate the definition here, because when you thought winery, I was thinking grapes and vineyards and lovely things like that. But we'll start with this. That's a good start. So, yeah, I would, my preference would be we approve this and that, and we can, the staff can take an action item to come back later with a brewery, once we get that together. I agree. It's necessary so we can start some more economic development activities. Any other questions, counsel? This one is. Yeah, 11. Did I open a public hearing? I did, didn't I? Okay. So this is a public hearing. Anyone want to speak on this? You're welcome to approach the dials and speak right now. If not, at 6:54, I take us out of the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance 2002-04 amendment as presented tonight.
All right, okay. All those in favor raise your hand here. All those both? Excellent. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Bren. All right, moving forward. So at 6:54, recess into workshop. Item number 13, we've got a crowd here and they're waiting for this. Library. Ellen, take it away.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. Let me get my notes out here. Thanks for having us here tonight. Yeah, we do have, yeah, quite a crowd.
I was going to say a raucous crowd here for the library.
Hopefully not too raucous. Yeah, you don't usually get to hear from us. We like to truck along next door and just do what we do. But Gabe thought it would be a good idea for us to take this opportunity to let you know kind of what we do and how we do it. And for those of you that are less familiar, you know, just kind of give you an update on where we are right now. There we go. So let's start off with a few details. We have 11 staff and one intern right now. That's five full-time and six part-time staff members. We have around 61,000 items. That's kind of a hard number to pin down because we're always getting new stuff in, taking old stuff out. And we have about 10,000 square feet in the, in the building next door. That building was built in 1992, and it's been renovated twice to keep up with, or to try to keep up with, the growing community. We have, it's not on the slide, but we have around 7,000 active patrons. That's people who have used their card within the last three years. So that, there's still a lot more people out there who have a library card, you know, in their wallet, and they just haven't been in in a while. And then we have a lot of users who, and I don't have a number for this, who use the library without a card. So that's people who come in and use the computers, people who come in there to study for whatever reason, they don't want to check out books, so they never get a card. So a lot of our numbers are kind of, kind of soft, you know? We, we get a lot of, a lot of different kind of usage, a lot of different kind of visitors. So, yeah, speaking of visitors, we see anywhere from 2,000 to 9,000 visitors every month. That varies a great deal depending on the time of year, what's going on. We obviously get a lot more in the summer as the kids are coming in and stuff like that, less at other times. And the larger numbers were pre-pandemic, of course. Everything's changed a lot over the last year. And our visitors are a little down, but we're still seeing a steady stream of people coming in. Facilities, we got, I got lots of pictures, so to keep y'all up with everything that we're doing. You see our, our sort of entrance view there. We've got, just there in the building, we've got three study rooms. Those are small study rooms that hold, you know, anywhere from one to about eight people. We've got 10 public computers where people can use like Microsoft Office or the internet. They can print. And we got one 35-person meeting room in the front. Over the past year, we haven't been able to use that because we've been using it for quarantining items, but that's going to come back online soon. And, okay, services. So you probably know, you've heard this before, that the library is not just about the books. I like to think that if, even if it was just about the books, it would be worth it because there are many, many places in the country and other countries that would love to have everything we have in the building next door. But, but it's not just about the books. We also have adult classes and workshops. You'll hear more about that in a minute. Children's and teen programs. Again, I've got people to talk to you about that. We've got those meeting spaces limited right now, but, but we do have them and they get used all the time. Not just our study rooms, but we have tables. We have just different areas where people can come in there to work. That's been really important this past year with a lot of people working from home, study, meet, you know, meet with other people. We've got free Wi-Fi. Printing and faxing, we do charge for, but that's available for our residents and, and much more. We also answer questions, register voters, provide community information. We do a lot of things over there. Basically, anything that anybody asks us to do. And then we also have online services. These have become more important over the last year, but also just, you know, over the past many years as more and more people are using smartphones, using online services. We have research databases available for free. We have eBooks and audiobooks, magazines and comics, all available for free to download on your phone, on your computer. We have language learning, and we have a social media presence as well. We're on Facebook, Instagram and YouTube. So when I was putting the slideshow together, I almost titled this slide COVID, but that was too depressing, so I just put 2020. Obviously, the events of the last year have impacted the library a great deal. We were closed for about half of March and all of April while we were just trying to get a handle on where we, you know, where we go from here. There was so much uncertainty at that time. But we opened again for curbside on May 7th. And, you know, we're able to get our items out the door into people's hands. We had one lady that, I think that first week, who said, oh, I'm so glad you're open. I was waiting for this more than I was waiting for my hairdresser to open. So we were, we were glad we could start getting stuff out the door again. But we found very quickly that people needed our computers and our spaces as much as they need our books. So that was the, the main question we started getting when, while we were doing that curbside-only service was, when can I come in and use the computer? So as soon as we could, as soon as we could safely, we opened back up, opened the building back up to the public. So that was May 26 last year. And we separated everybody off. We used a lot of, a lot of cleaning, a lot of different safety protocols, but we wanted to get those people back in so that we could, you know, give them as much service as we could.
Ellen, one of the biggest complaints I got during that time was, when is the library going to open? The most angry people that called me were about the library. Council members, staff, citizens, my relatives, so huge interest in the library. That was a big story.
Yeah, so we wanted to get open as soon as we could. And I'm pleased to, you know, tell y'all that none of my staff have gotten COVID from the library. So I feel like our procedures worked really well, or have worked, you know, so far really well. And as, you know, as that year progressed and, you know, more so in the recent days, we are slowly bringing our practices back to more, a more normal state. Okay, so projects. Yeah, so during that downtime, while we were completely closed, while we were not having as many people come in, we used that time to work on a lot of different projects that we never have time for because we're always, you know, helping people, checking stuff out, you know, all that stuff. So while we were closed, we had all the staff onboard. They were working not exactly normal hours, but, you know, as much as we could. We did deep cleaning, we did organizing, inventory, weeding, all the things that just fall by the wayside when we're busy. And we took that opportunity to do a few updates to the building. We, just cosmetic stuff, really. We did some painting, got rid of some old wallpaper, you know, made it look even more nicer and more welcoming. And then as the, you know, as the year progressed, and we're not as, we haven't been as, quite as busy as normal, we've continued that process to, you know, to really get into those projects that we can't get to in a normal busy year. So we've been able to accomplish so much more over the past year than we would have in a normal year, just because we've had more of that staff time to get those stuff done. Okay, and so as my coworkers will tell you in a minute, we've, we've used the past year to look for creative ways to serve our citizens. We got the library a Zoom subscription and started doing classes and workshops online. We started a YouTube channel and put our Storytimes online. We used, we diverted funds from buying regular books into buying eBooks so that we could, you know, kind of build up that collection while we were closed and, and then continuing on. We did a lot of take-home activities so that people wouldn't have to spend time in the library, they could just take that with them. We did special purchases, you'll see in the picture there, of educational books for kids who were studying at home and just a lot of different creative ways to, you know, to help out our community during that weird year. The other big event of last year was the retirement of Debbie Randall, our children's librarian. She'd been with the library almost 30 years and left really big shoes to fill, but we were able to pull from our staff that we already had, promote them into the positions to, you know, to fill that gap. And I didn't have a great picture of them, so I had to pull a screenshot from one of their Storytime videos, but that's Kristi Haney and Angela Hines, who are our co-children's librarians now. Kristi handles the younger kids, Angela goes for the teens and school-age kids, and they're doing a great job growing into that, that hole that Debbie left. So that's been a really positive thing out of the last year. So 2021, what's next? This year, we've had several exciting partnerships. We've been working with emergency management, both on the winter storm, we did a shelter in the library. And with the COVID vaccine, we've been helping get the word out about that. We've been fielding calls for people who needed help registering, stuff like that. We've been working with the city's internship program. We have, he was going to be here tonight, but had a conflict. But Job has been working with, with us for several months and has been a valuable member of our adult learning team. And, and then we had another internship program with Texas Women's University where they sent us one of their library science master's students for six weeks, and she worked on some projects with us. So a lot of positive partnerships this year so far. Usage is coming back up. Right now, we're at 74% of our circulation of what it was last year before, before the pandemic. So that's, that's positive to see it, you know, building back up to, you know, to a normal level. And like I said, a steady stream of visitors, computer users, phone calls, eBook checkouts, everything. So we're building back up to our normal services as, as it's safe to do that. We are planning for the summer. Kristi will tell you a little more about that. And for the future, whether that includes a new library building, we'll see, you know, in the next few weeks, or longer in this current building. We're just wanting to make sure that we're optimizing our services for the needs of our community. I wanted to bring some of my staff here to, you know, to present their, you know, their departments to you so that you could, you know, get to know them a little bit and see their enthusiasm for their own programs. So first of all, I would like to bring up Kristi Haney, who is our children's services librarian.
Oh, you can do that.
Okay. And she's going to tell you about our children's programs.
Y'all mind if I? I like wearing them, don't get me wrong, but when you're talking and you're sucking in your mask, it doesn't feel so great. Mayor, counsel, thank you for having me, as, thank you for introducing me. I am Kristi Haney. I am the new children's librarian, not necessarily new per se, because I've been there almost two years. Well, no, actually, it is two years. But I am very enthusiastic about this position. Just roughly, for the, the section that I focus on, we have roughly about 18,000 of that 60,000 books that Ellen was talking about. But again, that changes because as new things are coming in, we're weeding old things out. And I'm trying to stay current and on top of when new releases come and based on what our patrons, and my patrons age from probably sixth grade on down, what they're looking for. And I try to stay on top of that. Coming from an education background, that has been a love of my life, and I love to see the enthusiasm of my kids that are coming in and participating with me. Now, something new that was really kind of a shock to me was Storytime. Yes, I've read the Classroom Children, but getting up in front of a camera was a totally different ballgame. So along with Angela, my cohort, we do Storytime every Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock. I have noticed, just from data that I've collected, when I started this position in October, I had roughly about seven people in audience. As of lately, I've had 21 kids in audience, and I'm just so excited because each week there's new ones that coming in, that are coming in. And I've asked a couple of them this past time, I'm like, how did you see me? Or how did you know we had this? And friends of this library have spread the word. So that, that's good. So not only do we do it in Storytime Live version, but we're also projecting it through Zoom, through social media, Facebook, YouTube. I've even had some of my professors, because I'm one of those ones going back to grad school, send me a message going, hey, guess what? I saw you on YouTube. Okay, thank you. And my studies actually are based on public libraries and focusing on children's librarianship, which is what I've wanted to do for a long time, so I'm in the right, right ball field and in the right home, I think. As far as projects and crafts, we do offer what are called make and take As far as projects and crafts, we do offer what are called make-and-take crafts after Storytime. We also project that to our audiences out there. Angela and I make sure we make note, "Hey, that if you can't make it in today, not a worry, come in, we have crafts available." And I also try to, when we have Storytime, pulling all the books I can find on the subject matter that we have. So, like if we're talking about On the Farm, like last week, I pull all the books I have on On Farm, so parents can cut down that time of kids running around and, "Oh, thank you, Ms. Haney," you know. So, I'm, I'm trying to work with the parents as well, based on what their needs are. What I have noticed is roughly there is an age gap, third through sixth, where we're having a lot of more distance learners. And I've had parents send me a couple of emails, and I've also had parents of the younger ones that are there going, "Hey, what materials do you have on this?" Okay, I'm right on top of that. I'm like, yes, we did create, Ellen did an awesome job with setting up a display as far as materials for homeschooling patrons. I'm working with the parents who are doing homeschooling for the younger ages. So, I work with them and try and get materials out to them as quickly as possible, based on what they need. As for SRC, okay, another new ballgame for me, and boy, do I have some big shoes to fill. I know all of you know Debbie, and I am amazed at what she was doing. And right now, we're gearing up for it. I have already started working with businesses within the community for sponsorship for our Storytime. I've also recruited live performers because I'm gearing up for us having a normal, but modified SRC with collaboration with the Rex Center. And this year's themes is tails and tails. Tails as in like animal tails, and tails as in like tall tales. So, there's a lot of information there to work with, and I'm looking forward to that. Again, it is going to be a little smaller. I'm still trying to, because we don't have a whole lot of people who are still comfortable coming out, especially coming off of a pandemic. So, I'm trying to work with them and make sure we have everything done virtually as well as in person, so that we can reach a broad base of everyone that we need to. And I think that's all on my notes. I believe that's all I have on my notes. Thank you guys for having me.
Thanks, Kristi. Angela was going to be here tonight, but then couldn't make it, so you don't get to hear her perspective, unfortunately, because she's, you know, she's the one who's really passionate about this. But I'll try and give you an overview of our teen programs. We continued our teen programs in person throughout last year, just because this group of people is really a vulnerable population, stuck at home at a crucial time of their lives, and so we wanted to make sure that we had that in-person connection with them, even though we really shut down most of our programming last year. These are typically small programs, a small number of kids coming in, but huge in the individual lives of those children. It's common for the teens who are regulars at our programs to become library volunteers and to really learn to love the library and feel comfortable there. These pictures are pre-COVID, no masks, that wasn't, that wasn't last year, but they illustrate kind of the, some kind of, some of the programs that we have. Every month, we have an arts and crafts program, a video games program, and a movie, and then we throw in themed programs, board games, holiday parties. And in the summer, we branch out with things like animal programs, you'll see in the picture there, and other educational programming. We try to keep all of these programs hands-on and engaging, and to encourage the teens to connect with each other as well as, as well as with the librarians. It's a great program, and Angela's doing a great job with this, with these kids to, to help us plan these and stay in touch with what teens want. We have a teen advisory board, probably five or six teens who tell us, you know, they recommend different programs, they recommend items to buy for the library, so we get that teen And then I wanted to close with this picture. I love this picture. It just shows you how comfortable these teens are in the library, and that's, you know, that's, that's a hard thing to find with this age group. So, I'm really, really happy with where we are with this program. And with that, I will bring up Ronnie, who is our adult services librarian, and he's going to tell you a little bit about our classes and programs that we've got going for adults.
Privilege to be here with y'all tonight. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. The Adult Education Program at John Ed Keeter Public Library, I'm just going to go back to last March, because that's all I know about. But since last March, we've served people from 18 different countries around the world, seven major language groups, which doesn't include dialects that a lot of our students, our learners, I like to call them, speak. We receive referrals to our program from prestigious organizations like the Terrence Literacy Coalition, the Women's Center of Fort Worth. Our learners participate in GED, citizenship, English Studies, Spanish Studies, and a variety of workshops. Our workshop topics include things like diet and nutrition, diabetic health, mental health, arts and crafts, real estate, several others. The workshops are presented by professionals who are donating their time voluntarily with their only goal to contribute to the education of the citizens in our community. We also host a weekly history discussion. We call it History Buffs, original name, but we call it History Buffs. The topics cover a wide variety of different things, world history and cultures, American history, topics such as art, science, religion, music, the history of psychiatry, and the history of toilet paper were included this year. Most of our History Buffs discussion is on Zoom, and we do have a few people who come in person, but it's geared for the Zoom audience. We have a lot of people who attend that and make suggestions to topics. It's discussed in a format where it's presented with facts, and then people are invited to become a part of that. The study rooms that Ellen mentioned earlier, we utilize for our classes, and as you watch the photos go by, you'll see that we organize those with some in one-on-one tutoring and some with groups. It was kind of slow in the beginning as people started coming back, but as I said, we, we fill those study rooms every day, either with classrooms, with our students on tutorial, or doing our Zoom classes from those study room locations. Also, we have people who come to study for their master's programs or to continue their education. Last year, between August and December, we had two medical students who are graduates of medical school in Puerto Rico, who came here to the United States as immigrants, working on their, finishing their medical test, the United States Medical Licensing Exam. And so, they came to our library, used our study facilities, our Wi-Fi, in order to prepare for that test that they took in December. And people like that come weekly to study at our library. I spoke with a young lady today who's finishing her nursing degree. She's from Ghana, Africa, and is becoming a citizen here, as well as working on her, her nursing degree, and very far along with that, and is very grateful for the use of our, our study rooms, week to week. One of the very positive things that has happened during COVID is Zoom. And I thought Zoom was the sound the car made until about a year ago, and in the spring of last year, we got a Zoom account at the library, and we started doing a lot of different things on Zoom. First was tutorial, one-on-one English tutorial for our English, our ESOL, English Speakers of Other Languages. Many of our people who want to learn English don't just speak one other language, several of them speak three or four or five other languages, and we're helping them, accommodating them with English. But on the Zoom program, we have done, our workshops have been on Zoom for several months. That's the way we conducted workshops. We conduct our history, like I said, our History Buffs program. But to give you an idea of where that's come to since last March, is March of this year, March 2021, we had 37 Zoom events in one month. And the majority of those were English ESOL classes, some of them were workshops, of course, every week, one of them, each week, was the History Buffs program. But that has become a great tool and a great asset to what we do also. None of this would have been possible without our staff, and we have our, our staff that is there every day at the library, that helps out with all of these things, and to welcome our guests and our studiers, our learners, to the library, but also our volunteers, and I have, some of them are with us tonight, and I'd like for you guys to stand, Marla and Danny, would y'all, y'all stand please? There are a couple of our, our instructors who volunteer with us. Not all of them were able to be here tonight, of course, and, and we weren't sure we could bring them all. But these, these people donate their time and energy. We've got, we've got instructors from a wide variety of backgrounds. We've got retired military, we've got people who've been in education all their lives, people who have, in all kinds of areas, who've come and willingly donate their time and energy to teach and instruct. The common denominator with all of our instructors is that they all have a compassion for our community, our people in the community, to help our citizens to better themselves, and as they do that, it, it's interesting to me, one of the most interesting things that I enjoy is to watch our learners as they're leaving, and to watch them come out of the classrooms laughing, communicating with each other, talking to our instructors, and it's, it's a place where they come and they feel good about being, and it also teaches them, through our instructors, through these people like this right here, that we are here to help you, and as a community, we're bonded together, and they tell other people, the majority of my forms that they fill out that are very simple forms, that any of our learners fill out when they come to a class, the last question on the page says, "How did you hear about us?" And the vast majority is a friend. And when a friend is recommending a program that they've, they've come to, they've experienced the, the compassion and the energy that they get from our instructors, and they take that back to their community and tell them, we bring in many. Ayub was not able to be here tonight. I have to mention him, he's already been mentioned before, our intern, he works with us. In fact, he's been a vital asset. The man speaks French and English and four other languages that I can't say, and he, and he has been a great asset. People come in, and one, I pride myself in thinking I know a few words of French. I was going to try to eavesdrop on a conversation he was having with one of our learners, because I, I thought they were going to speak French, no, they picked another language and took off in it, and I was, I was, I said, "What was that?" And he explained to me, and I was lost. But Ayub made a statement, and he, in fact, he gave me a bunch of notes to read for him tonight, which I won't do, but don't tell him I didn't do it. But he, he made a statement in these notes that I would like to share with you, that from a perspective of a young man coming from another place in the world to here, he's from Burundi, and bringing with him his talents and skills to share with our community. I would like to read a phrase, a sentence or two from this. He says these words, "Our library is an intersection of different countries, cultures, languages, traditions, religions, customs, et cetera. Hence, these values are the ones which form the U.S. motto, e pluribus unum, one out of many, one." And he, see, you observe that in him as he's working with our students, that attitude, and he's so grateful. In fact, most of what he put in notes tonight was his gratitude for allowing him to participate and being a part of what we do and sharing in that here. And so, I'm, I'm very thankful, very proud, and very blessed to be a part of the Adult Education Program at the John Ed Keeter Public Library. Thank you.
And that is the last thing. Yeah, Ronnie came to us right as COVID was happening, and so, he's, he's really built up that program. Built up that program from, from basically nothing, so we're really, really happy with where that's going in the future. So, that's all we have. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Council, questions?
Well, I would like to start by giving you all a standing.
And I forgot to put it in the slides, but I would like to thank our library board and our library boosters, because without their support, we couldn't do what we do. Janet, here is our library boosters president, and she has been a great supporter, and I think we have one of the library board in the, in the back, maybe. But anyway, big thanks to them, because we couldn't do this without them.
Well, I would like to say, I, I feel a little bad. I mean, I know my, my kids have been to the library, but I really haven't. And now I know, I'm coming to visit. I'm coming to visit. I want to get a tour, I want to see some of these classes, I want to, I want to see these high school students laying on the floor all comfortable. I want to see your Zoom, your Zoom meetings, I mean, and the passion all you guys have. Everybody pulled up here and spoke. I mean, you made me, I felt the passion that you have for what you're doing, and that was amazing to me. So, I will definitely be scheduling something to come by, you know, and, and, and just visit and see, just, you know, interact with you guys. I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, council? Councilmember Big Horse?
Well, I thought the mayor could speak quickly, but Mr. Horton, I think you had him beat. But, no, it's tremendous.
Told him not to take too long.
Okay.
He could go on all night about this.
I, I am just truly in amazement at what this library pulls off all the time. I have one comment, I said Kathy, or not, sorry, Kristi, I've got Kathy on the brain. I have a proposition for you, so I'd like to talk to you for a moment after the, after the meeting. And the reason I'm thinking of Kathy is because we have your bake sale twice a year, and I sure miss Kathy's bread.
Oh, I know. We were so sad. We had a book sale last Saturday, but it was just books. It was not baked goods, unfortunately, but we're hoping to get back there, because, yeah, we need that bread.
We need Kathy's bread.
Yes.
And Charlie, just plug your ears, you don't need to hear about that, you don't need to know about that, don't even go there.
Yeah, Cindy's going to buy it all. Yeah, we'll get back there. We're hoping, we're hoping in the fall, we can have the baked goods as well.
Is huge, and if nobody's ever been to the bake sale, you need to go. It's probably one of the most impressive sales that I have ever seen. It goes to show that not only does Saginaw have a heart for its community, but they've got a lot of good cooks in this city, a lot of good cooks.
Councilmember Copeland?
I just want to thank you, oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor's got the floor, Charlie, hold on.
I just want to thank y'all for what you do. As a citizen of Saginaw, it's unbelievable what, like Councilmember Big Horse said, what you pull off. You know, it's just amazing. And you, you're in a 10,000-square-foot building, and you know, for most of it, that sounds pretty big, but you've got 61-plus-thousand items that you're trying to cram in there. And then pull off your meetings. God love you, that's all I can say.
I would just like to second what Charlie and Cindy said, and Charles, that, you know, a library is such an important part of a community, and a library that offers such a wide variety of programs in this size of a city, I think is quite unusual. And I know that we do have people coming from other areas besides Saginaw to use our facility. It has a really good name.
It does, yeah.
So, you know, it's something we can be very proud of and, and just keep up the good work.
Oh, thanks.
Other comments, questions?
I'll be glad when we get back to normal, so you can come teach the kids again. My kids love Storytime.
Yeah, we did.
I started that at the end of this summer, so I can start working with everybody to get out there, so not just so y'all can see me, but, you know, I have a lot of energy out of it.
My kids love y'all.
I'm going to meet my max with those kids.
That's right, yeah.
They've loved y'all for years, and we appreciate everything y'all do for us.
We're hoping to get back into that outreach this fall.
I know, I'm ready for it.
I think this was a great example of just the breadth of services y'all offer, and highlights the need for a new facility.
You said it.
Shameless plug, and I'm not above that. So, absolutely highlights the need for a larger, newer facility. I've had people say, "Well, what does the library do?" This is a great explanation, much better than I could, so thank you so much for bringing this to our attention.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. All right, moving forward, item number 14, physical year 2021, 2025 Budget Workshop. For that, Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We're going to continue our series of budget workshops. Tonight, we're going to focus on tax rate and just overall budget. We talk about adopting the budget, but it's actually 10 different budgets that y'all adopt. We adopt a budget for each of these different funds, and we'll talk about them specifically as we go through the spring and the summer. But I wanted to make that point because your, we, we have different budgets for legal reasons or to comply with general for legal reasons or to comply with general accounting principles, generally accepted accounting principles. So that's why we have all of these different funds and, and adopt a budget for each of them. This is a picture of what the, what the total looks like and how it's split out by each of those different funds. In 2021, the total was just over 69 million. This was, that was an unusual year. Our capital projects fund was larger than an average year because we've got the Bailey-Boswell Overpass Project, the fire station, and the design for Knowles. But this just gives you an idea of the total and then how each of the funds are a piece of that total. This is just a little refresher. We talked a lot last year about the tax rate and how we come about calculating the tax rate and that we had changes the last year in the terminology. So I'm going to just briefly go over those to remind you. The tax levy, the tax revenue is a major source of revenue for the general fund and the, mostly the only source other than interest earnings for the debt service fund. We come, we come up with a tax levy or the revenue for those funds based on two components. There's the tax base, which is the property values of the properties within the city. And those values are determined by the Terran Appraisal District. We'll get our first values at the end of April, and they'll continue to give us values until they do a certified estimate on July 25th. And that's what we base our budget on. And then the tax rate is the other component of how we come up with our estimated property tax revenue. And that's what y'all decide on. That's the rate that you decide on. So you take the, the property values times the tax rate, and that's how we determine the budgeted property tax revenues. Just like we have different components of the budget, there's different components of the tax rate. Tax rate is, is in two pieces, the maintenance and operations or the M and O, and that's the portion that goes to fund the general fund. And then we have the interest and sinking. That's the portion that goes to fund the debt service. That's where we pay our principal and interest for the bonds that we've issued. In our current fiscal year, fiscal year 2021, that shows the total of the, the total tax rate that was approved by y'all is 46. almost 1/6 cents. And then that's, the graph just shows the percentage of INS versus M and L. When we, when y'all approve the tax rate, there's a lot of steps that are, that are involved in that. We are required by law to calculate multiple tax rates. And the, and we're going to go through, briefly through these. If y'all have questions, stop me as I go. Otherwise, I'll go, I'll go too fast. These tax rates are presented to the city council usually as one of the workshops and then during the public hearing. We also are required to post these tax rates to our website. We also publish them in the newspaper. We use the Fort Worth Star-Telegram. And then this last year, the state legislature made a change to where the Terran Appraisal District or all appraisal districts within the state combine all of the tax rate information. And so this last year and going forward, we also publish that information on their website.
I want, Kim, anybody who has a question about this, please feel to ask. Feel, and not just council people in the audience can ask as well. If you have any questions, please ask. This is complicated stuff, but Kim is an expert, so we're fortunate to have her.
We, and, and I wanted to mention, you know, I've had two calls in the last maybe six months about this. So people are paying attention. I think maybe this effort for more transparency, I've had people call. So I'm happy to, I'm at my office all, all day, every day. So I'm happy to work with you more if you want a more in-depth explanation. Let's go on. So anyway, so those are the, the different places that you can go to look at the tax rate if you're more, if you're interested in that. The first piece, and really the starting point of calculating all of these different tax rates is the non-new revenue tax rate. And that's calculated based on the amount of, the rate that generates the same amount of operating revenue as last year based on the same properties. And then to that, you add the amount that's required for debt. And that's what the non-new, non-new revenue tax rate is. I have that little equation down there that we mentioned earlier. The tax revenue equals the base, the values, times the rate. And so this is an important thing to realize that if your base is increasing and if you're trying to get the same amount of revenue, if your base goes up, then your tax rate goes down to get that same amount. And the, and the reverse is true. If your values are going down, then the tax rate to generate that same amount of income is going to increase. So the non-new revenue tax rate is the starting point. And then from there, we calculate the voter-approved tax rate. Last year was the first year that the voter-approved tax rate was going, was supposed to be three, was supposed to be 3.5% more, generate 3.5% more of operating, operating revenue. For years and years, it was 8%. And then the legislature changed that to 3.5%. Although last year with the disaster declaration due to the COVID pandemic, we were once again allowed to calculate it at 8%, which we did, although you all ended up, ended up approving a tax rate below the 3.5% voter-approved tax rate. But I just wanted to mention that the voter-approved tax rate is an important tax rate because if a tax rate above that is approved, then it triggers an automatic election that our citizens would be able to vote on over that tax rate. So that's the voter-approved tax rate. We are, we have the option, since we are a city with a population of less than 30,000, to also use a de minimis tax rate. And that is a tax rate that would generate an additional $500,000 for operations. And then you add to that the amount required for debt service. This is, this was again approved by the last state legislature. And I think it was used mostly for small towns that are really in a booming, starting huge growth. And so this was, this allows them to do that. The only thing that I want to mention about the de minimis tax rate, and I think it was maybe an oversight on their part, was that it requires a very accelerated budget timetable. So if we contemplate ever using the de minimis tax rate, we need to know about that way in advance because the requirements for adoption are early August. So you have one or maybe two weeks at the most to adopt a budget after you receive your certified values on July 25th. And then depending on where that relates to the 8% over your voter-approved tax rate depends on if there's possibly an automatic election or if voters may petition for an election. The unused incremental rate, this is, sure.
So is the, it says 8%. It's 3.5% this year. But if you use the de minimis.
The de minimis tax rate would always be related to the 8%.
Always based on the 8% if you're in the legislature, adjusted to 3.5%.
That's correct. Yeah. So the unused incremental rate is something new. It was approved during the last legislative session, but this will be the first year that will actually come into play. And I have a little example there, and then I have a table for the city of Saginaw. So basically, what this does is it's allowing you to, so if you approve a tax rate that doesn't go up to your 3.5%, they're encouraging cities not to automatically go up to your maximum amount of 3.5%. So what you can do is you can save or bank the difference. And this is an example of what I mean by that. So look for an example in fiscal year 21 in the example. And there was a voter-approved tax rate of 50 cents, and we adopted a tax rate of 50 cents. There is a difference of zero. So there was no use, no unused incremental rate in that year. But maybe in 2021, we had a rate of 20.25 cents, and we only adopted, or 50, sorry, 50.25 cents, and we only adopted a rate of 50 cents. We would have a difference or an unused rate of about, of a quarter of a cent. So you can bank that. We could save that. And then maybe in 2022, we had a voter-approved rate of 51 cents, but we adopted 50 cents. We have another penny there. So in 2023, you have those two years' worth of savings that if you chose, you could then use over and above the voter-approved rate in fiscal year 2023. You can bank it up for, up to three years. And the first year that you were able to bank would be this last 2021. And so this next chart there shows the city of Saginaw. The voter-approved rate last year was the 46.87 cents. We approved a rate of just over 46 cents. So we have the .71 cents that's in our bank. Now, I do want to mention, I used the voter approval rate calculated at the 3% and not the 8%. There is debate right now. Technically, we have a higher unused incremental rate because y'all authorized us to calculate it at the 8% rate. I don't think that the state legislature intended for the unused incremental rate to be based on that. So that's why I used the 3%. But there is debate, and I'm sure throughout the summer, there'll be more discussion about that. But just to be on the safe side, I wanted to show you at least the minimum amount of the unused incremental rate that we have banked or saved, if you will.
So .0071, what would that equal in dollars? Not much, but I guess what would, what would it mean?
I should have known that you were going to ask me that question. I don't, I can't tell you off the top of my head, Mayor.
My guess is very little, but 10 grand or 20 grand, but maybe even less.
Yeah, every little bit could help. If we were to use it at the 8%, it would be over 2 cents, 2.3 cents. There is a big difference there.
All right. Questions for Kim? Oh, I'm sorry, you're not done.
No, I had one more slide, but this was it, just the basics of the tax rate, just to remind y'all because we're going to start talking about this here coming up the rest of the spring and the summer before you know it. The last slide that I have for y'all is a continuation from last year or last council meeting's discussion about step adjustment. I want to say that these are very preliminary estimates. Melanie's been working with the departments as far as coming up with what the department head recommendations are for step increases and to get them up to, to get identified positions up to a midpoint. These numbers will change. We still need to get some consistency between departments. We all need to get together to make sure that we're all using the same criteria so that we can defend it and justify it to our employees. But based on the information that we have right now, it's just under 411,000 to get everyone up to those levels. If you want a basis of comparison, last year when we adjusted the salaries overall by 3%, that was about 361,000. So about 50,000 more than last year.
What is that WWW line?
Water Waste Water Fund. Sorry. The enterprise fund, the Water Waste Water Fund. That is the only other fund that has personnel costs in it other than the general funds. So those are the guys that are out there fixing the water lines and the sewer lines and making our, making sure we've got clean drinking water and that our dirty water goes away.
So these costs will bring, will bring pretty much every employee up to.
Not, not every employee, just those that have been here a while. This was to address the issue of compression where employees that are in the same position that have been here maybe five or six years are being compensated at the same levels as employees in that same position that have only been here one or two years.
Mr. Mayor? Just want to be clear. So this addresses the midpoint per, like Kim explained in our last discussion, our last meeting. We need to try to address cost of living each budget year as well so that we stay consistent with the market. I want to, in future workshops, address the idea of reclassification. So existing positions that may be modified or changed, promotional opportunities for folks. And then kind of a last basket in the discussion would be brand new positions. So kind of taking it a piece at a time. So, so let's say if it was the council's desire to implement this all at once to the midpoint, we would have no across-the-board adjustments for employees, which is not a situation we need to be in. We need to, it's tough because we need to bring everybody, you've heard the saying, a rising tide lifts all ships. We've got to bring everybody up slowly as well as address some of the compression issues. So if there's a perfect salary plan somewhere, please share it. Pretty convinced there's, there's not.
I, I didn't understand what you said. So did you say it wouldn't be good to, to bring everybody up to this level with this dollar amount now? Or?
No, I, I think it's, that's our target. But I want to recognize that we've, as we bring new employees in and we have existing employees, we still have to have adjustments for those that are below the midpoint, if that makes sense. So say we take this and this largely would command a lot of capacity in our budget. You know, employees that weren't affected by this would receive no raise.
Okay.
The reality is that costs go up each year. We're in the second year of health insurance, so we've got a fixed rate. Next year, I promise you, we're going to be looking at, a major driver of our budget will be, you know, whatever our rerate is. So there's a lot of moving parts. I wish it were, if it were really simple or easy, there'd be a template we could all copy and modify. So we're working through it, and we intend to bring that back to you piece at a time.
You're essentially talking about two separate things, the step plan and COLA.
That's correct.
Cost of living.
Yep.
We can choose to do both or neither or parse of both or, that's what we're talking about. And we're not there yet, but we're discussing that.
That's correct. And, and to, want to thank the council for the support. And also mention that mid-year, especially in the police department, we made some adjustments for some of the issues for patrol officers that were most affected based on tenure.
Is this, go ahead, Charles.
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And keep in mind, I want employees to keep in mind, we may, may not do all this this year.
Right.
But I, I think we'll do some. It just depends on what we're going to do. We will bite off some of this, but we may not bite off the whole chunk this year. So just keep that in mind. Don't get too excited, but we are committed to, to this steps. But it may take a little time to get there. So just keep that in mind. I don't know where we're going to be now. We're just starting the conversation, where the budget's going to go and everything else. But this is great information.
That's correct.
Any other questions for Kim?
I think Charles had one.
Does this police number include what was already done for them or this is?
No. No, I think, Chief, I think this would address a number of corporal and above, those ranks.
This number is only for corporate and above?
Go ahead.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'm just, I just want to know.
No, it, it takes in a number of police officers, but it also addresses some of the supervisors at corporal or above. It's about, it's about a 15 or 16 person group.
Okay.
Yeah, just, I think what's, what's being presented to us here what's realistic in terms of meeting the 3.5% threshold or the de minimis amount. But what, what staff is essentially saying is, this is what they're recommending. But what, what staff is essentially saying is, this is what they're recommending to stay within what we can do without going to voters, okay? And what we've heard from staff is that they need at least four times more to get to midpoint. We've heard that. Four times more than what we're seeing. So they need four times more than what they're presenting to us today, but what they're presenting to us today is, the reason they're presenting it to us this way is because they know this is what we can go get without asking the voters, okay? And if we wanted more than this, we would have to ask the voters. And I think it's, I certainly appreciate staff bringing to us what they think we can get off the dais without going to voters. And we owe, I think we owe staff every bit of this, every ounce of it. We probably, if we could do more, we should do more, but I don't think that we can without going to voters. And just a couple of questions, Kim. At 3, at 3.5% versus the de minimis amount right now, based on our valuation, what do we get the most out of? Would we get the most out of going with the de minimis amount this year?
Well, I haven't even started the calculations this year because we haven't gotten our first values, but yes, it would be significantly more to go with the de minimis rate.
I think that's, so if, let's just take our 3.5% over last year and let's add our .0071 to that. If that's not going to get us to a $500,000 increase in revenue, and we know we're not even making up one quarter of the gap on our employees, I don't know why we're not thinking about the de minimis rate now. I really don't know why we wouldn't be thinking about the de minimis rate right now.
To Kim's point, if that's the will of the council, we need to know sooner rather than later, because it's an expert.
That's why we're having the conversation right now.
That's correct.
That's why I'm saying this.
Yeah. No, that's a fair point.
I certainly, and I wholeheartedly believe that if we're losing our officers to Burleson for 10,000 bucks a pop, okay, we need to be doing more. We really do. And if the de minimis amount is, say, $70,000 or $100,000 in revenue more than our maximum 3.5 plus our bank, then we should be thinking about the de minimis amount and going down the road. That sets staff on their way. And quite frankly, I mean, there's something to talk about in the budget, but we're done with the discussion of the tax rate. And, so, I would, I would encourage council at this point to know, we're underpaying our staff, they've made it clear to us, and we're, we can't even get a quarter of the way there with the de minimis amount. So why aren't we just doing that? And the direction to staff is maximize everything you can to staff pay in this budget cycle.
So if we do the minimis, you said it's August, we have to, have to vote on the?
It's, I'll have to go back and look at the calendar. It's, it's, you have to count back from the uniform election date. So last year, I want to say it was the first or second week in August, so it would be about the same this year. So it's just a very fast turnaround between when we get our certified values, then we have to have our public hearing and post the, post the notices and the budget. It can be done, but it will be very swift.
You said certified values are July 25th?
Certified values, we get July 25th, yes, sir.
We get readers before that, but the final is not till July 25th, right?
Right.
Okay. I'm also thinking about a potential new council member that may not be seated until June if we have a runoff. So we're pouring this down there for him as well, but.
Happened to me.
It would be faster than what happened.
I don't feel bad.
But I have one question, if we did do this de minimis tax rate, is there any way, I mean, based on that dollar amount that we would get, I mean, maybe, I don't know if it's just 500,000, or could it be over 500,000? Do you know, or?
The de minimis rate is calculated, the explanation I gave you is based on the current properties. So anything, any improvements that we have this year, so any new properties that have come on are over and above that.
Okay.
I don't know of any, I don't think that we're going to have as much new improvements as we, as we've had in the past few years. I'll get, I'll have a better idea at the end of the month, because we'll have our first preliminary values.
So is there like any way that we can, I mean, and this 410,000, I know that number is probably going to change, but the cost of living raise that you was also speaking about, Gabe, if we can incorporate all of that in this one tax rate, de minimis tax rate, without having to add any, I mean, if, if that cost of living raise is just 1% and then we, you know, or however you figure it out.
Yeah, yeah, I think we can get better numbers. One thing I'll mention as well is, we haven't, focus tonight is to take small steps, but we've also got sales tax that factors in, you know, thankfully, in the trajectory of our city, we're growing, so we're, we're growing in sales tax capacity, which all helps. So, yeah, we'll, we'll bring you more information. And just the last thing I want to mention is somewhat uncomfortable situation, but it's very common, especially for cities that are growing and growing quickly, which, you know, you all have seen the dirt moving around the city. It's upon us, which is exciting.
So decisions we've made in the past in terms of revenue, just to put it in perspective, I mean, when we were, when we were adjusting our tax rate between 7 and 8% back just three years ago, and we added in growth, our revenue increases were between 8 and 900,000. Matter of fact, and right now, we're talking about, we were seriously discussing an increase of 500,000, which is almost half of what we were doing three years ago, and pushing that in the direction of our employees. So to me, it's really a no-brainer. It's really a no-brainer. But I think staff should do the homework and tell us what that rate looks like, because obviously, there are political repercussions. Here, I'm the guy rolling off and I'm saying, oh, you're going to be hung with this big political mess, but at the end of the day, it's, the revenue increase is smaller than what we've seen. It is among the smallest of what we've seen in the last, say, six years. It's among the smallest at 500,000. And I don't think that our growth rate, our new taxes that are coming in this year are going to be anywhere close to what we've seen in the past. Our housing starts are down, what, by half or more this year?
It's pretty slow, but compared to past years, but it's the calm before the storm. So, I mean, y'all approve the.
But it's the tax rate.
It's coming.
But it won't apply yet.
That's correct.
It won't apply in this tax.
And that's the difficulty, so you may encounter folks out and about, you know, they see all this new growth, well, why doesn't it pay for itself? There's a lag time, and so you, you've got to have.
There's two years of lag time.
That's absolutely correct, yeah.
You have to build it, and then you have to tax it.
That's correct.
It's not built yet.
Yeah.
It's still grass.
Yep. Yep.
So we need to consider this, if we do this, this, this salary piece will eat up every bit of money we have. Be no more money for, no fire trucks, no, hardly any other equipment, maybe a little, but certainly not much.
Of our recurring capacity. Salaries would, would command that. We certainly would have flexibility for one-time expenditures, which, you know, we, we take, we do that when there's need and do that through mid-year budget adjustments. You know, I don't see many instances of need to wait when we need things, you know, first thing that popped to my head, the fire department, I think, had a vehicle replacement and no sense waiting until next budget year, we can do it now with one-time money, so. But our recurring capacity ongoing, we have to make sure we're structurally balanced, what's coming in, you know, ongoing recurring revenues we can pay for, so.
All right, so what we're going, if we're talking de minimis, is everybody okay with exploring that? We're not saying yes or no tonight, but we have to explore and have to direct Kim to explore pretty quickly, we can't wait on that. You want to say something, Kim?
I was just going to say, we can keep that in mind going forward, and so as I get the values and as we flesh these numbers out and see what other budget issues there are, as we get closer to the summer, we can certainly make sure that we have in our schedule the option to go with the de minimis rate and approve it at the earlier date. And that would also, then you'll know exactly what rate we're talking about. It's too early to say at this point.
Councilmember Copeland?
Just to build on what Patrick has mentioned, we should keep in mind that the state legislature recognizes the fact that small cities might need this kind of help. And so they've given their blessing to smaller cities to be able to use this. And we all want to give our residents the best value that we can possibly give them. But you know, I think the very fact that the state legislature isn't known for being helpful to cities in funding, the very fact that they recognize that smaller cities might need this, you know, makes me want to at least explore it and use that if it's beneficial to us.
Councilmember Big.
In other words, I don't think we should just decide not to even go there.
Sandy?
And I agree with Mary, you know, I have no problem with exploring all of our options. In fact, I wish a lot of times, we had more options to explore. The step adjustment estimate chart that you presented to us, I think it would make a lot more sense to somebody like me that, because I see numbers here all over the board, from $532 to $127,000 per department. I'd like to know how many people we're talking about in each department and what that percentage of change is on the, on the average for the number of employees.
I can adjust the schedule and put more detail in it like that.
I would appreciate that. And the other thing I would like to see is a comparison to other cities that are similar to ours, including the two cities that I think we've been using as a, that's very close to us, so that's Kerrville and Belton, Texas. I'd like to see, you know, what their employees' salaries are, their ranges in their departments, and including their benefit package. I know Saginaw has a really great benefits package, so I'd like to see that included in these calculations as well, if you don't mind.
Mr. Mayor, so great point. Councilmember Big Horse, I, when we get into market-based adjustments, what I'd like the council to remember is that we are in the most competitive municipal market in the state, and that's Dallas-Fort Worth. I think any department director here would tell you that we've never lost an employee to West Texas in Kerrville or Belton in Central Texas. So if we get into comparisons, I think it's fair to look at folks within the DFW metroplex that are of similar size and financial capacity.
How much effort would it be to look at Belton and Kerrville? I mean, is it a tremendous amount of effort, or is it just a matter of a phone call and an email?
How about Uvalde or Far Texas in the Valley? I mean, what I'm trying to tell you is that our market is DFW. We're largely competing within a 45-minute commute. I think the police chief has told you that. Recent hires in the fire department were within the metroplex. So really, I know it's a, and maybe you get that from, from residents on the street, you know, pick your favorite city of approximately 25,000, but that's not our comparison. We're in this market.
Okay, fine, well, I still would like to see some comparisons.
Absolutely.
For the salaries as well as the benefit packages.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that would help us a lot more.
Sure.
So I think everybody is okay with exploring the de minimis route, having Kim look at it and just report back and let us know what you find out? How are we going to do this? How would it work? Okay. Any other questions for Kim? Anything else?
Mayor, I want to make one more point. 3.5%, you know, we were at 8% before the state limited cities to 3.5%. Think about what COLA is annually. I mean, just to keep up with the cost of living between 2 and 3%. So this is going to become a common conversation every budget cycle as to how much employee pay is going to consume that amount. It's going to be about 90% of that budget increase is going to be going to employee pay. So at some point, we've got to think about bringing things to the public for vote if we have to do something bigger. But I don't see this changing anywhere, anytime in the near future, so long as we have the folks in the state house right now that we have in the state house, 3.5% is going to stay 3.5%. It's not going up. And if that's just barely ahead of COLA and we're still trying to make our way to the midpoint, that's a whole lot to overcome. So I think using the de minimis tool is the tool that the state's given us, and while we're in the business of digging out of the hole and trying to get to the midpoint, we need to be seriously considering that tool, because 3.5% is just barely going to stay ahead of COLA. Anyway, that was the point I wanted to make.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Our good discussion, good information, folks. Great, great start on the budget. Anything else? If not, at 8:05, we can meet back in regular session. Executive session is thankfully not needed, right? Bren's gone, so, item $17, attend most adjourned.
A move adjourned.
Second standing, all the favor. At 8:06, we're out of here. Thank y'all, folks.